Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council on Tuesday, July 2, 2024. We have one early announcement, which is due to the observation of the Fourth of July holiday this week. Council will hold our Standing Committee meeting this afternoon at 1:30. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Mosley. Mrs. Kell Smith. Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mrs. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavell President.
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, remain standing for a moment of silence.
... to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next order of business is to amend the agendas. Is there a motion?
To move.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda has been amended. Our next order of business is proclamations. We have one to be presented. Councilman Coghill and Councilwoman Smith are not here yet, so we'll move on to those meetings to be read into the record. And we have one from Councilman Sharland and one from Councilwoman Warwick.
Councilman Sharland presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare June 27, 2024 as Allentown Senior Center Day in the City of Pittsburgh. And Councilwoman Warwick presents, now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare July 8, 2024 to be Richard V. Piacenti Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
And maybe a motion to approve?
To move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both proclamations have been approved. We also have the will of council. Councilwoman Strasburger, do you want to read its entirety or the final clause?
The final clause is fine, thanks.
Thank you.
Councilperson Strasburger presents, now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh hereby urges the PA House to pass HB 181, PA Family Care Act of 2024, and the PA Senate to pass SB 580, PA Family Care Act of 2024, and ensure that Pennsylvanian families are seen and supported through paid family medical leave.
And I believe we have one from Councilwoman Mosley as well?
Councilwoman Mosley presents, now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh makes known its support for Pennsylvania House Bill 1394, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh encourages the passing of the Pennsylvania Crown Act.
Do we have a motion to approve both will of councils?
Motion to approve.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Both wills of council have been approved. Councilwoman Smith is not here yet, so let's move on to public speakers and then we'll come back. The next order of business will be public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deboration, which are or may be before City Council, and profanity will not be permitted. Once you recall, please restate your name, provide your neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Vail, Hoover, Abuja, Tokyo, Ciudad de Mexico, Berlin. Vote by voter verification for whom worldwide is my commitment. Global Intelligence Society candidate for President 2024. GlobalIntelligenceSociety.org. We use optimal information and intelligence from Africa, Asia, the Americas, and Europe to solve Pittsburgh city and United States country problems. Concerns of council are clearly the supply of accurate information to citizens and support of Pittsburgh as an international city. There are more than ten language greetings above the Grand Street City County Building entry, and that signifies this. But I in the GIS think that the signifier is superficial and misleading, that it's false advertising. Are any of you what I consider to be vote unverified for whom counselors, Pittsburgh committed internationalists, are you, any of you, quadrilingual? Even bilingual? I'd like to know. That can communicate in four languages, a minimum of one language from each of the four world regions? As I am in African Hausa, Asian Nihongo, South American Espanol, European Deutsch, and indigenous tribal Unami and Navajo. I am a baby in those very complex languages. Do you think that Black African descent Mr. Ganey can communicate in any African language? Hausa, one of 500 Nigerian languages, or Swahili, Kenya? Obama couldn't do it. Citizens, do you think that Ken Rice, KDKATV, David Johnson, WPXI, Janelle Hall, WTAETV are quadrilingual? Have you ever heard KD Pixie or Tay anchors? These stellar information providers interview anyone in Espanol, Deutsch, Nihongo, Jeanwen, Hausa, Hindi? Information provision, public vocabulary number in Pittsburghese, American, Pittsburgh, American English of Rice, Johnson, and Hall? Twenty thousand out of the OED base of 200,000? Two thousand? No, it's closer to 200. Literally listening to the words of RJ and H will dumb you down. They are not poggers. Citizens, do you think that Mr. Ganey and Mr. Lavell are quadrilingual? Mr. Lavell? That Mr. Biden, Mr. Trump are more than monolingual? Barely lingual? What the 27 June 2024 debate showed was that they are not.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Ralph Williams.
Yes, thank you, President Lavell, members of council for letting me speak today. My name's Ralph Williams. I live in Allentown in the Caligari High Rise. The reason I'm here today is to speak about a few things. First of all, Councilwoman Lady Gross, I want to talk about these barricades that are up on Station Street. I go to church at East Mister Presbyterian. Every Sunday, I'm handicapped, I'm in a wheelchair. Every Sunday, I have to pull up in front of the church and have to go around those barricades. What is going on with this construction around Station Street and all around the area there? Because I'm getting tired of running into those barricades or seeing them every time I'm trying to get around. Also, this downtown committee for public safety is a joke, okay? It's gonna continue to be a joke until this council and the mayor decide to find some other way of fixing downtown. I come on this, I come on this meeting just about every week. Sometimes I can't because I have other obligations. But when I'm here, I speak and I always give logical ideas as to what to do. You guys have used my deer thing with the bow and arrow. I suggested that back in 2022, in October, okay? So, you know, you guys do use my ideas. I've come here a few times and spoke about calling in either the National Guard or try to find some way of making people safe downtown. Downtown is not safe, and it's, and there's a lot of reasons for that. Schuman Center is opening up today. Maybe that'll help a little bit. Let's get these juveniles off the street that are causing problems. Let's get downtown fixed back up. Let's get the homeless off the streets. Let's get them in where they need to be. And I come to find out too by a report that I saw on TV on the news that some of these homeless people are on drugs, selling drugs, and prostitution. Why aren't these homeless people in jail? Okay? They are committing a crime, all right? This is a problem here, a big problem, and our city is looking embarrassed by it, okay? I want to wish you all a very happy Independence Day, and I also want to say I'll be back next week. Be safe and have a great day. Thank you. Everyone in the gallery as well.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Camila Rivera Tinsley.
Good morning. Thank you for your time. My name is Camila Rivera Tinsley. I live in the Swiss Home Park neighborhood of Pittsburgh, and I'm here today to represent the Women and Girls Foundation, and also the Coalition of Nonprofits and Members across the state who are advocating for paid family and medical leave. Today we gather, or today, I'm here to extend my deepest gratitude to Councilwoman Erica Strasburger for her unwavering dedication and leadership in championing the cause of paid family and medical leave across the state. Paid family and medical leave is not just a policy initiative. It is a lifeline for families striving to break free from the cycle of poverty. For too long, the lack of access to such essential benefits has disproportionately burdened women, particularly Black and Latina women, who face systemic barriers that hinder their economic security. These disparities perpetuate inequality and deny families their stability, the very stability that they need to thrive. Statistics underscore the urgency of this issue. Currently, only 19% of workers in the United States have access to paid family and medical leave, with even lower rates among low-income earners and minority communities. Without paid leave, women often face impossible choices between caregiving and earning a livelihood, a dilemma that exacts a long-term toll on their economic well-being and their health and the well-being of their families. The introduction of the Will of Council for Paid Family and Medical Leave is not just a compassionate act, it's a smart economic strategy. Studies consistently show that providing paid leave leads to higher workforce participation, increased employee retention, and improved child and maternal health outcomes. It is an investment in our future workforce and a pathway to greater economic stability for all Pennsylvanians. Moreover, implementing paid leave will ultimately save our Commonwealth money by reducing reliance on public assistance programs and improving health outcomes. Let us continue to stand together and let Pittsburgh continue to be a beacon of leadership on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Tierra Collins.
Good morning. My name's Tierra Collins and I'm from the Hill District. I'm here today for a right to counsel. I took most of my day yesterday, and I've left several messages from Anthony Coghill yesterday. And I took my day to help a veteran who was wrongfully locked out of his place and wrongfully evicted from his apartment. The people for the last four weeks would not give him access to his place to get his things. I started out with making calls to the Commission on Human Relation, trying to help him get his cat out of the building three weeks ago when they first locked him out. Yesterday, we spent the whole entire day trying to figure out how to be able to get him his things, his items, his clothes, his keepsakes, pictures of his mother, who's no longer here, stuff that is deep to his heart that he can't be replaced, that can't be replaced. They took this stuff, put it on the dump truck, 1-800-dump it, and took it to McKee's Walks, dumped this man's stuff, and crushed it up. This is something that I have been fighting for a long time. When you've been through something like this, you know what it feels like. For me, it's personal, I'm very angry, I'm gonna let you know, I'm very angry. Arbor Management, what they did yesterday was wrong, it's not, it's not right. And I'm sick of people who have nothing better to do with their time sitting around and picking on the little people. Whatever it is that we need to do to find the funding to help get people, for the right to counsel, to be able to stop what these landlords are doing, landlords, these landlords, they're miserable. And to see that you can literally take someone and just take their stuff and throw it away and not care, and don't even, and act like you've done nothing wrong, knowingly when you know that you were wrong, this is heartbreaking. And I know there is many of you up there that are on this, that are on the same fight and want to see this bill passed. I'm here today asking y'all to get this bill passed. I don't know what we need to do, who we need to go talk to, who I need to go see. Let me know. I'm all in, because after yesterday, this man's a veteran. They offered to pay this man's rent. They wouldn't even take the money from the veterans. They really just wanted this man out. Why don't they? I feel like it paid a part. Now he's living where he works, in a co-hatch. He's not supposed to be living there, but thanks to them, this man is now homeless. We now have another homeless person that we have to figure out what to do and how to help them. And there's no one out here fighting, and I know, I can't say there's no one out here fighting, because there is. But as of today, I'm fighting. I've been fighting. I've been helping a lot of people. I've been out here doing this work for the last 20 years. But the last 10 years, I've been all in. I need this, I need help. We need to figure out how to help these people and how to help this man who is currently homeless, and it should have never happened. His stuff should have never been destroyed. It should have never been crushed, but it was, and Arbor Management needs to pay. Thank you all. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you very much. Our next registered speaker is Azawu Ju'i Chaknan Kani.
In loca allicin, proto lion, for the light in me honors, the light in you. Greetings. I am an average New American matriarch, and my title is Yehalahi Chinal Kehin, located in the Delaware Territory, as you all will call so-called Pittsburgh. My people are the original beings, the original stewards, the original inhabitants of our ancestral lands, the Americas, including the islands. The unway, unway, from our great law of peace. So my statements today will reflect invoking my people's story, our perspective, our constitutional indigenous rights, Article I, Section 2, Clause 3, and excluding Indians not taxed. Etymology of tax is a noun. We are not to be evaluated, estimated, assessed, handled, touched, to burden, impose a tax, censured, charged, put strain on, to enter on a list or enrolled. We are not to be either one of these nefarious actions. My people are acknowledging multiple maxims of law and lawful documents such as the Constitution of the United States of America, Article I, Section 2, Clause 3, excluding Indians not taxed, the Delaware Treaty, the Northwest Ordinance, the American Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People, the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, House Congress Resolution 331, whereas my people are acknowledged to the development of the United States Constitution and to reaffirm the continuing government-to-government relationship with my people. One hundredth Congress Second Session, and the list continues. We are not to be confused with Title 25 Native Americans, who are also within the box of person, persons, immigrants, foreigners, citizens, naturalized citizens, non-citizens, residents, humans, individuals, all under the jurisdiction of the United States of America, which is a corporation, AKA a business. My people, the average New Americans, have been reclassified as so-called Indians, so-called colored, so-called Negro, and so-called Black. We are not social political constructs. We are not wards of the state. And we are also no longer going to stand to be continuously discriminated against and being conspired against my people's constitutional indigenous rights. Thomasina v. O. Jordan Case, Walter Ashby-Clacker justified with the state encouraging them to reclass non-reservation Indians to Negro, which has since been repealed as unlawful. All municipal officers, citizens, immigrants, and other foreigners are obligated to uphold their oath to the Constitution, Article I, Section 2, Clause 3, excluding Indians not taxed. Are you going to continue within the walk of your nefarious, sloth, agentisphobe ancestors of not honoring the oath to the Constitution? Of genocide, 1091. Of conspiracy against rights, of 18 U.S. Code 242, deprivation of rights under the color of law. Excuse me. Paper genocide, war crimes against my people, and the list continues. The unlawful enforcement of ill-conceived policies and codes against my people.
Thank you. Our last registered speaker is Chief Pomai Chakman Yehalahi.
Ba'ashkawa alik malo ke'in jah iin ma in wu in willeke cha'ata. Ni wa'iv i Pomai Chakman Yehalahi, an ma po'se u pa'aa'at si' i mati' seal. My title is Pomai Chakman Yehalahi. Greetings, and I thank you again for coming before you to speak. Thus I come to shake and to scatter great rain, great raining, bodies of water upon the fire of colonization, the fire of genocide on our earth. And I welcome you to my tribute to extinguish and end and terminate and destroy colonization. To extinguish and end and terminate and destroy forced assimilation of our people, Aboriginal, American, Indians, not taxed. To extinguish and end and terminate eugenics, the destruction of our people, our lives. To extinguish and end and terminate and destroy genocide, the eradication of our people. And to honor, to sanctify, to join together, to renew the root of many of our original beings. I descend and come down from my ancestors' lineage, the first of the soil. I come to awaken the lost original beings and to feed the heart and the head of my lost lineage. One people, many nations, first of the soil. And we are here and will continue to come back and remind people that we are still here and that we were not destroyed and genocided off of the planet. And that whenever we invoke our rights, we are invoking our rights to be, just to be, just to exist as we are naturally, just to be who we are ancestral, just to be who we are in connection to our ancestral lands here, the Americas, and the entire Western Hemisphere and all of our island. We have come before City Council for the last five years. We have worked with the Commission on Human Relations to create a way forward to protect the rights of indigenous people in this territory. And we continue to remind you that if you took a note to the Constitution, as well as the state constitution and your county and your city charter, that it all says you must be in line with the United States Constitution, and anything outside of that is a dereliction of duty. So honor the rights of indigenous people and take serious consideration in this legislation that we've created with Jam Haven, the former executive director of the Commission on Human Relations. He is very honorable, and we worked for over a year on this legislation. Consider that this will help mend the ill-conceived policies and make peace between our people and your people, your government, your entities, the immigrants, and the citizens alike. In loca allicin, the light in me honors, the light in you.
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time. Provide your name, neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Is there anyone in chambers wishing to speak? Anyone in chambers wishing to speak? Seeing no one, we'll move on to the presentation of papers, beginning with Councilman Sharland, Chair of Human Resources.
Morning, Mr. President.
Morning.
Councilperson Sharland presents Bill Number 631. Resolution providing that the City of Pittsburgh enter into a professional services agreement and/or contract with Industrial Organizational Solutions, Inc., for professional consulting services in connection with fire battalion chief position job analyses, the development administration in scoring of written examinations and development, assessor selection, administration in scoring, scoring of the oral board examinations, and providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $71,005.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
Thank you, President Lavell.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 632. Resolution amending Resolution 544 of 2022, which authorized the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership for services rendered by Clean Team ambassadors within the South Side Parking Enhancement District by increasing the total not to exceed amount by $300,000 for a new total not to exceed $675,000 over three years.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 633. Resolution amending Resolution Number 352 of 2023, which authorized an amended agreement with Workiva, Inc., to provide a subscription-based budget publishing software solution for four years by extending the term for one year and by increasing the approved amount by $52,438.11 for a new total cost not to exceed $221,344.14. Bill Number 634. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a nondisclosure agreement at no cost to the city with Cabotix Fiber Systems Limited for the city to receive estimated pricing information from Cabotix for their innovative fiber optic installation system. Bill 635. Resolution amending Resolution 33 of 2022, authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements and amendments thereto with CIS, Center for Internet Security, for Albert M.D. monitoring application, which predicts malicious activity on the city network by monitoring, alerting, and analyzing information gathered by sensors by increasing the approved amount by $41,400 for an amended total cost not to exceed $97,500 over eight years. Bill 636. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into a professional service agreement and/or contract with NeoGov for the continual maintenance of software for HR workforce management, applicant tracking, and civil service testing, and providing for the payment of the cost thereof, cost not to exceed $47,408.14. And Bill 637. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Safety and the director of Innovation and Performance to enter into a professional services agreement or agreements with Locality Media, Inc., doing business as first due for professional services relating to purchase and implementation of new firehouse management and administrative support software for a total cost not to exceed $501,546.50 over three years.
Thank you. That takes us to Councilman Mosley, Chair of Intergovernmental Educational Affairs. Councilwoman Gross for Councilman Mosley.
Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill Number 638. Resolution amending Resolution 15, 198 and 375 of 2024, which authorize a cooperation agreement or agreements with the City of Pittsburgh Equipment Leasing Authority for the purchase and leasing of vehicles, equipment and accessories, equipment support, infrastructure, and professional services in fiscal year 2024 by increasing the authorized amount by $29,870 to a new total of $14,525,666.50 for additional items to be added to the plan. Bill 639. Resolution further amending Resolution Number 42 of 2019, entitled Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works to enter into a professional services agreement between the City of Pittsburgh and AE7 Pittsburgh, LLC, for architectural and engineering design services for the multi-story office buildout at 412, formerly 420 Boulevard of the Allies, by increasing the amount of the professional services agreement with AE7 by $142,740.31 from $432,000 to $574,740.31. And Bill Number 640. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement, agreements, and/or amendments with the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority for the purpose of rehabilitating the sewer system at the city's Frick Park underneath the Fern Hollow Bridge at no cost to the city.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Gross, if you'd be willing to offer a motion to waive Rule 8 on Bill 639 for Councilman Mosley?
So is the Boulevard of the Allies one?
Yes.
I would not.
Okay. Is there any other member wishing to do so? Okay. That moves us on to Councilwoman Kell Smith, Chair of Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services.
No new papers, I'm sorry. No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. That takes us to Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 641. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of James Sheets and his attorney, Apesos Law, LLC, for a single payment in 2024 in the amount of $10,000 in full in final settlement of litigation filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill Number 642. Resolution authorizing interdepartmental transfers in the amount of $1,479,512.47 from the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to the Department of Public Safety Bureau of Administration, the Department of Public Works Bureau of Operations and Bureau of Facilities, and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure. These budget-neutral transfers are necessary to properly align funding associated with Pittsburgh Joint Collective. associated with Pittsburgh Joint Collective Bargaining Committee Contract Ratification. And Bill Number 643, Resolution Amending Resolution 407 of 2024, which re-appropriated federal American Rescue Plan funding by updating the approved projects as outlined in Exhibit A, Version 8.
Councilwoman Strasburger.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the rules of council so that Bill 643 appears on this afternoon's agenda.
There a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill 643 will appear on this afternoon's Standing Committee agenda. That takes us to Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 645, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements with CDR Maguire, Inc. for project design management services and reviews in connection with various City of Pittsburgh construction projects for a total not to exceed amount of two million seven hundred ninety-eight thousand four hundred sixty-nine dollars and seventy cent, reimbursable at various rates depending on the project. Bill 646, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy for the administration of certain 2024 parks, tax-funded projects and programs and providing for the payment of the cost not to exceed six hundred and forty thousand dollars. And Bill Number 647, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works and/or the Director of the Department of Finance to enter into a lease, leases, sublease, subleases and/or amendments at the Fraser Field House located at 3700 Fraser Street with the Lessee, the Oakland Planning and Development Corporation for the purpose of providing community programming, meetings and event space to OPDC for a five-year period at no cost to the city.
Thank you. And that takes us to Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure. Oh, I didn't, all right. Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. And then on behalf of myself, if we could begin with the three communications?
Bill Number 648, Communication from Jake Pollack, Director of Office of Management and Budget, submitting to City Council the attached status update from the Grants Office for the week ended June 28, 2024. Bill Number 649, Communication from Jake Pollack, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, submitting acting pay requests on behalf of the Department of Public Safety for Sarah Hershey per the acting pay policy revised in June 2018. And Bill 650, Communication from Mayor Ed Ganey submitting a notice of change to policy guidelines governing Paid Sick Days Act dated June 23, 2024.
Need a motion to read, receive and file?
Motion to read, receive and file.
Need a second?
Checking.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bills have read, receiving and filed. If we could now read the informing appointment?
Bill 651, Communication Informing Council of the Appointment of Alyssa Belion as Assistant Director, Construction of the Department of Permits, Licenses and Inspections.
And also need a motion to read, receive and file?
No moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill has been read, received and filed. The next order of business is reports on committee for final action, beginning with Councilwoman Erica Strasburger presenting on the Committee of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 627, Reported a Committee on Finance and Law for June 26, 2024 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 597, Resolution Authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Julian Simpson in an amount not to exceed two thousand nine hundred twenty-five dollars over one year in full and final settlement of a claim for damage to her parked vehicle from a city ES vehicle on February 22, 2024. Bill 598, Resolution Authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Duquesne Light Company in an amount not to exceed six thousand six hundred nine dollars and seventy-four cent over one year in full and final settlement of a claim for damage to light pole near 6934 Livingston Avenue from a city police vehicle on December 30, 2023. Bill 599, Resolution Authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Joni Elder in an amount not to exceed two thousand six hundred fifty dollars over one year in full and final settlement of a claim for damage to the retaining wall at her residence from a city ES vehicle on May 9, 2023. And Bill Number 600, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 587 of 2021, entitled Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance to enter into an agreement or agreements with Frost Todd Brown LLC for legal assistance relating to real estate, public finance and municipal law. In addition, said firm will be available on an as-needed basis to provide consultation services so as to allocate an additional fifty thousand dollars to Frost Todd, Frost Brown Todd LLC for a new total not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion? If none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, passage of the bills will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received a legally required number of votes is passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Barbara Warwick presenting on the Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 628, Reported a Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure for June 26, 2024 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 608, Resolution Approving the Recommendation Made by the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure that the concrete portion of Sageman Avenue from Sussex to Woodburn be paved with asphalt in accordance with Section 41706 of the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances. Bill 609, Resolution Approving the Recommendation Made by the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure that the concrete portion of Sand Key Court from Churchview Avenue to the Dead End be paved with asphalt in accordance with Section 41706 of the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? If none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received a legally required number of votes is passed finally. And that takes us to Councilman Bobby Wilson presenting on the Committee of Land Use and Economic Development. Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 629, Reported a Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for June 26, 2024 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 601, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to grant a site access license agreement to Charles Street Area Corporation in order to complete a Phase II environmental assessment required to create an affordable housing unit development at no cost to the city.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received a legally required number of votes is passed finally. And finally, Councilman Kahari Mosley presenting on the Committee of Intergovernmental Educational Affairs. Councilwoman Gross, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill Number 630, Reported a Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs for June 26, 2024 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 595, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan, 201 Amber Street. Excuse me, at no cost to the city. And Bill 596, Resolution Authorizing a Cooperation Agreement or Agreements Providing for the Transfer of Funds Not to Exceed eighty-five thousand dollars to the City of Pittsburgh Equipment Leasing Authority for the purchase of vehicles for use by the Department of Public Safety Bureau of Police to support police recruitment efforts. This expenditure is associated with grant funds that the city will receive from the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? If none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor, all in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received a legally required number of votes is passed finally. That takes us to motions and resolutions. Is there anything for members, Councilman Sharland?
Mr. President, point of order here. I have a question about the Assistant Director in PLI. Don't we have an opportunity to interview that person?
Yes.
Actually, we never passed that bill that...
Yes, you did.
Hmm? It's for directors. We never...
But you can interview assistant directors, but you can't turn them down, I think, because I think that was it. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. President. I'm just trying to remember.
Previously, there was a bill that was actually going to require us to interview assistant directors. And there was one other category as well. We ultimately did not pass that bill. But if you want the right to bring them forward for an interview, we have that. We don't have the ability to confirm.
Correct. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Do you wish to?
Yeah, I mean, I would like to, but I, but if, if, if we don't have, if other members aren't supportive of that, that's fine. I, I just would like the opportunity to talk with it. Assistant Director of BLI.
So you can...
But I don't really want to hold their appointment, so, because I...
We can't deny it either.
Right.
So we can, you could make a motion to bring them to the table for a formal interview or you could just reach out to them and set up a meeting.
Okay.
Either, I'll support either or.
Motion to hold for an interview?
Second.
Any discussion? Councilwoman Smith?
I just want to say that even though you can't block, five members could not approve something or could stop something or could do something with legislation. So it's not like directors or assistants are immune to council's authority. They're not. But I will say that I like to interview people in my office. I like talking to them about issues that are related to my area. Although I appreciate that this needs to be public because we're having so many issues with PLNI and I think that the director and others and the administration are working on some things. But I continue to tell the Director Pollack that I think PLNI needs to be moved back under Public Safety where they had some, we had somebody that we could hold accountable and reach and discuss. But I'm working, going to work with Director Pollack on some things first and see what his idea is to get that department operating better for the City of Pittsburgh. But having continually condemned properties all over the city, not having directors returning phone calls, not finding out what fire inspectors are doing and inspections are happening. We've had many issues in, on our district. And over the years, it's not been isolated to one director. It's been, you know, several directors. But there have been some that at least knew to respond to council and to, and to work with us on things and that they didn't just answer to one side of this hall. So I would just say that with that said, I put things in place before where council had to have reports and some other things. And we didn't put in any penalties if they didn't, but I'm going to revisit that if, if, if council members continue to have issues and can't get responses and resolve some issues, outstanding issues. This is not fair to our residents. They're looking at properties. And I understand a lot of things are funding and a lot of things are policy issues. But there's a lot going on with that department. And, and not just that department, but I think city planning and some others. I think I would love to sit down and have some real conversations on how they could all work a little bit better for the City of Pittsburgh. And to find out what DPW is doing with a lot of the paused projects and how they plan on moving some of them forward, including poles that closed unexpectedly. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Councilman Sharland, would you wish for that interview to take place before Standing Committee agenda? Or do you want it as a totally separate?
Before the Standing Committee would work for me.
Okay.
And, and just our office, we have a standing meeting with Director Green and we met this morning and kind of talked through things. I don't think that I was aware, I mean, I, I knew, but I don't think it was as front of my mind that Director Green had not backfilled his position with the Assistant Director role that he was previously in. So I'm very thankful that he is able to fill that position, which should allow him to free, free himself up to work on some of the process improvements, the other part of the department. So I'm very thankful that this appointment came through, but I would like the opportunity to talk with him. Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We will get the interview scheduled. Anything else for members?
I'd like to make a motion for a post-agenda on PLNI.
There a second? Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll work with you to get that scheduled.
Thank you.
Anything else for members? If not, we do have meeting announcements. This afternoon at 1:00, council will hold an executive session on Bill 641 as it relates to litigation matters. Also, this afternoon at 1:30, council will hold our regular Standing Committee meeting. Speaker registration will close today at 12:30. To register to speak at these meetings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage. You may also call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. And then lastly, next week's council will hold our regular and Standing Committee meetings on Tuesday, July 9th and Wednesday, July 10th at 10:00 a.m. respectively. Registration ends at 9:00 a.m. the morning of each meeting. To register to speak at these council meetings, please fill out the sign-up form in its entirety on the council meeting webpage. You may also call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Councilwoman Smith?
I apologize. During the, the Pledge of Allegiance, I wanted to ask for a moment of silence for Tom Pollan. Tom Pollan was the superintendent of our parks and he battled cancer for several years really bravely. And I tell people all the time, when you see the amazing parks in the City of Pittsburgh and people raid our parks and our city number one for our parks, it's largely in part due to the work of Tom Pollan. And there were times, Tom lived in Shortir City and one of the last projects he worked on, it was in his neighborhoods, the Spray Park at Shortir. But, and he's done, you know, a lot of things since then, working with others. And we know that that department does amazing things for the City of Pittsburgh. But I really want to make sure that we recognize all the work that Tom Pollan has done on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh, especially in our playgrounds and parks. So if we have a moment of silence, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, a motion to excuse the absent member, approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
No moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.